Okay, I'd like to call our informal session to order. And, Mr. Manager, I understand we have an update on what's going on with our current crisis.
Yes, we do. Today, we have Dr. Demetria Lindsay, who is the Director of the Virginia Beach Health Department, and also, after Dr. Lindsay, Erin Sutton will follow up with what's going on at the staff level.
Welcome, Dr. Lindsay.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, have the following update for you. We have our latest data from our public health monitoring in Virginia. Currently, we have sixty-seven cases in Virginia, or to date. This includes four cases in Virginia Beach. All cases in Virginia Beach have been travel or familiar-related. We also have two deaths. Local health departments in Virginia are identifying people in contact with the cases who may be, who may need to stay in their home for fourteen days after exposure, or potential exposure. Also, those who may require testing and who need to monitor themselves for symptoms of We also working closely with hospitals and private providers to answer questions and facilitate testing and to provide consultation on testing and other public health guidelines. We have expanded our call center to accommodate more calls. We received approximately three hundred calls yesterday, and that's from the general public, does not include provider calls and consultations. We apologize for any convenience for the change in the number, but we did have to update our entire system to accommodate the number of calls coming in. The new number is six eight three two seven five four. That's six eight three two seven five four. However, if individuals call the original number, they will get a recording directing them to the new number. I would like to make a special address to special populations. We know that members of our senior community and individuals with chronic health conditions are at greater risk for complications from COVID-19 infection. I would strongly encourage these individuals to take steps to limit their exposure to groups of people. Make plans now that particularly, if we begin to experience evidence of sustained community spread, to self-confine at home as much as possible. I'd also like to encourage family members and churches to be of assistance to these individuals, and they can be a great assistance to provide, by providing support to the individuals who do not have COVID-19, but are encouraged to stay home as a preventive measure. To stay in touch with them, to help in their ability to access their basic needs, and also to stay in regular communication to combat isolation and loneliness for those individuals. That's all I have, unless there are any questions.
And any questions?
Yes, I have one.
Yes.
How many locations do you have where the testing can take place?
I don't know the exact number. However, any private provider can order a test through private labs such as LabCorp and Quest, I believe. Also, for the state lab, any provider can call us, and we can discuss the case and whether or not they meet the high-risk criteria that we use for testing at the state lab at DCLS. Also, a number of hospitals are beginning to come online to provide, to provide enhanced testing. All the hos, our local hospitals were providing testing already, but now, for example, Centerra Princess Anne has set up a drive-through where people can go through and get screened to determine whether or not they need to be tested.
Is that the only drive-through?
There are some others in Virginia. I believe two others, don't quote me on that, but that's the only one that I know in our immediate area.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Sabrina.
Yes. With the potential of our local hospitals being overburdened by the virus, is it, would it be wise to find other areas and other places within the city to, for people to go or to house people if there becomes an overburden with our, in our hospitals, for additional beds?
Are you referring to individuals who are actually infected?
Right. As time goes on, you know, we don't know, you know, how aggressive the virus is going to be and how many people are going to be affected. Think last, what was it, last week, there were two, now there's four. And so, with the potential that it could spread, and I know the hospitals may become overburdened, so is there, should we be looking for other areas or contingency plan where we should have additional beddings or beds available for people who are sick?
I would start by saying, all of our hospitals do have pandemic plans in place, as well as our larger facilities such as the Health Department. Currently, if someone has a COVID-19 infection, there is an assessment made to determine whether or not they need to be hospitalized.
Okay.
And some of the cases will, do not necessarily need to be hospitalized. In fact, some of the cases we've had have been able to effectively isolate their, themselves in their home while being monitored by the healthcare provider and public health. So, first, we have, we have that situation where everyone does not have to have a hospital bed. That said, that if we, though, if we did have individuals who had significant complications from the disease, large number of elderly, large number of people with chronic health conditions who may require more extensive care, that would be a stress on our system. I know our hospitals currently typically tend to operate at a near-full capacity, so this is already stretching them. If we had a demand for more people to be on ventilators, that would be a challenge throughout our country, but that would not, the solution that you're, that you're raising would not be able to address that. Regarding housing, I think that would be larger an issue for people who do not have homes, and we do need to plan and are thinking about if we have individuals who don't have a place to reside, and they have infection and need to be isolated. We would work with city emergency planning and our health, human services departments to try to come up with a solution for them.
Do you think it would be wise that we do that now?
We are having those discussions.
So you're having those discussions?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Very, very good.
Anybody else? You know, I was at my pharmacy this morning, and the pharmacy and pharmacy techs were telling me that they did not have access to, the hand sanitizers and things of that nature, and people were approaching them, looking for testing and everything. I think we can't underscore, you know, the, you know, the health condition of the healthcare workers themselves, and, you know, that's why we got to get the message out that, you know, the phone screenings are, you know, the preferable way to do. Is that correct?
I would agree with that. I think that that's an important issue, that is another reason why we're, at the Health Department, we're also reserving our testing or focusing our testing on those that we feel are at high risk. We know that there are limitations to the supply chain for all of the resources that we need. Another factor that comes into plot, to mind with what you're raising is the use of masks. For the general public, we do not recommend that they use masks. It just simply depletes the supplies that are available for our emergency responders and, and public health workers, and it has not been shown to be effective in terms of preventing the transmission of infection for the general public.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate all your hard efforts, really, really do.
Well, thank you. We appreciate working with you as well.
Thank you.
And your support.
Thank you. Erin, welcome.
So, just a few things to get everybody updated. As, as everyone is well aware, the Governor issued the State of Emergency on March 12th. We are, Commissioner of Health issued a communicable disease of public health threat on February 7th, and, and currently, as, as Dr. Lindsay stated, we have four cases here in the city of Virginia Beach. The city has moved to modified operations. Starting Tuesday morning, all buildings are closed to the public, all city building, all city businesses being handled over the phone, email, or online, with exceptions by appointment only. The courts have been closed through April 6th, and we are continuing to encourage staff to work virtually. As you are well aware, the schools closed as of Friday, the 16th. Continuity of learning began today, and I spoke with the schools, and their technology folks reported that students actually logged in to do their work today. They also started their food service today, and while they don't have a final count yet, they, they gave me around, just over two thousand, that they're estimating at this point, but gave the example at Green Run, they served over a hundred meals, and they spoke with several elementary schools surrounding Green Run that served between forty and eighty meals, so that worked well today. The EOC is activated and in an, in a virtual status. Folks are, are working through that, a little bit of a learning curve, but we are communicating well and getting that information out to everybody. We did have our local declaration as of Friday, the 13th, and we are utilizing our COVID Task Force to address issues, and what we've done is put together the work groups. So, just a quick, Communications has activated their virtual Joint Information Center. Julie is heading that up, and our, our website, emergency.vbgov.com, is keeping everybody up to date. The Continuity of Government group is working through meetings, public meetings, and, and all of those pieces that go with, with keeping our, our city moving. HR, Finance, Information Technology, Budget kind of grouped together. As you're aware, we have a public health emergency leave policy. Finance is providing ongoing support for procurement, accounts payable, bids, so on and so forth. It is, they are working through that and actually working through telecommuting very well. Public Safety has, is, worked through their triage plans with ECCS and a common personal protective equipment guidance document. Special Events, as you're well aware, they are meeting twice a week now. They have been in contact with event organizers. Just so you're aware of who the Special Events Work Group includes, that's our Convention and Visitor Bureau, our CPO, Special Events and Film Office, Parks and Rec, School Activities Representative, Farmers Market, Aquarium, Cultural Affairs, so anybody who does events in our city, they're meeting twice a week. They've developed a, they've canceled events through 331, and some of that is cancellation from our side, other, the event organizers have gone ahead and, and canceled. They are now working in two-week increments to, to go through that. They're using a, an event risk matrix, but they still have hundreds of events booked and are trying to understand the safe, the, the safe window to begin rescheduling events, and that's, that's not available at this point. There have been a couple of questions regarding our leased sites, and they are not in our purview to dictate whether they are canceled or not. Vulnerable Populations, Councilwoman Wooton, we've already started those conversations as it relates to isolation and quarantine. We've been in contact with our Housing Resource Center, and we actually have a meeting again tomorrow to start, kind of, what's the best option that we have to, to work through that issue? So, we have all of the stakeholders. We've already put together quite a few ideas, and now it's going to be running through, kind of, what will work, what won't work. The challenge that we have is congregate care. Putting everybody together causes the same problem, so, so we're working through those contingency plans right now. Resources, just so you're all aware, are backordered for weeks, months. We ordered resources weeks ago, and those orders, several of them have been canceled or are on backordered. We are working through local vendors one-on-one, and we're also working with the state through the resource requesting process. Centerra Princess Anne, we are supporting, we are helping to provide support to the screening operations with traffic control. The amphitheater opened their gates for us to, to allow for traffic to be funneled through there, so we keep it off our, our own roads, and they have seen quite a few through there. I was waiting for numbers, they, they haven't gotten back to me yet. And Dr. Lindsay touched on the call center, and, and I think we are, because we're under a national emergency, the Stafford Act is, is in action, so we are tracking all of our expenses for this and, and working through with our finance group. So, that's all I have.
Any questions, comments? Yes, Michael?
Just looking for some clarification, it may come from you, Ms. Sutton, or Mr. Leahy, or possibly one of the deputy city managers. So, you mentioned vulnerable populations, and that certainly includes people who are homeless, but I think that also most certainly includes people who are receiving mental health services.
Yes.
And also, people who receive support from the city in terms of other human services as well.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm wondering how, if you could just, share with us what that process looks like. If city buildings are closed and staff are working remotely, how are we able to offer continuity of support to those people who most certainly need it very, very desperately now and in continuity?
Okay. So, the Director of Human Services has provided a detailed document. I don't have it with me, but I will provide you that information. She went through each of the services that they provide and what they've done to, to move things around and provide contact and support for those, so I will get you that information as soon as we finish.
I would appreciate that, and that leads me to really my next point, which is that I realize this is a rapidly moving and evolving situation, but I think to the extent that it's possible that members of council could be briefed so that we're all on the same page, because members of the public are contacting, I'll speak for myself, and I suspect this is true for my colleagues, members of the public are contacting us and they're asking for information, and I certainly understand that this is a moment in time which is an emergency, and it requires emergency management, and I certainly don't want political people getting in the way of that, no doubt, but I do think it's really of the utmost importance that we're able to share. For example, just the information you relayed to me could have, possibly could have been given to us in advance, so we can share that on the front end and be ambassadors in a way, and I, and so I would request that, to the extent that is possible, and to the extent that it doesn't detract from the other things that you're doing, that we're able to, you know, to speak from the same page, and, and, and that we would, I think we would be in an improved position.
Yes.
To serve the residents in this really uneasy time for everyone. So, I want to thank you and, and Mr. Leahy, and everyone who's here from, from the city for all the great work that you're doing to be responsive, and look forward to continuing the conversation.
Absolutely. Absolutely, we will do that.
Okay. Lewis and Jess.
I'll go back to the question I asked of the doctor. Who would be in charge of setting up additional testing stations?
That's all through the, the Hospital and Healthcare Association and the state, Virginia Hospital and Healthcare Association, as they're working through. The biggest challenge, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Lindsay, the biggest challenge is the number of kits that are available. I do know that Beach General and Independence were having conversations with our, our, our police officers to, to figure out traffic management and the best option, once, if they do get permission to, to open a drive-through for there as well.
Okay, so, the permission comes through, who?
Comes through the, for, so, the challenge that we have with those two locations is traffic control.
Okay.
So, if we, so we, we're very blessed at Princess Anne and the fact that we have the amphitheater to route, so we're just trying to find the best option. If they do, if the hospitals are identified as additional screening areas, then we are ready to support as best we can.
So, your second option you're looking at is, what, Bayside Independence, is that?
They approached us to ask what the feasibility would be if they do get permission to become screening sites.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much.
Jess?
Dr. Lindsay raised her hand, I didn't know if she had something to add.
Oh.
I was going to say...
Please come to the podium.
I was going to say that a major challenge right now is the testing supplies, particularly the swabs, so there is interest in doing more testing, but until that supply chain is replenished, it will be a challenge.
It's understandable.
Jess?
Erin, first, I want to say thank you for all the work you're doing, your staff's doing, all of our staffs in the various departments. I know it's a uneasy time. Could you speak a little to the importance of people taking only what they need at the grocery store and trying to keep as level as a head, as, level as a head as possible? I know that in my interactions with people in our community that there is some fear, and I think it would be beneficial for us to kind of be, setting the example and leading the way in that we, we want commerce to continue normally as possible and, and, and not overwhelming our grocery stores and pharmacies is an important part of that.
Yeah, and, and I believe that was a very common message today through all the press conferences, from, from the federal government to, to the state government, and, and will reiterate that, that our supply chain is intact, that they are still receiving their, their shipments, that they are, their staff is there to support it. I know several of the grocery chains have brought in more staff in their warehouses to, to move and restock the shelves, but it's extremely important to understand that our supply chain is intact, and we are not, and the Governor has not issued any closings of grocery stores at this point, and so we do, it is extremely important that folks think about not only themselves, but their, their neighbors, that, their elderly neighbors, or those that are in the vulnerable population that might need some of these supplies that are not currently available. So, I can't, I can't say it enough that our supply chain is intact and that folks need to, to really think about that before they go to the store.
So, it would be fair to say that buying groceries at a week at a time is okay to do still?
Absolutely, absolutely. I, I, I believe at the end of this, that, that part of my education to the community will change, because I think I really prepared them for hurricane preparedness, and that would be how they shopped. So, we need to, we need to alter that message a little bit, so.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Anybody else? You know, I just want to thank you because you're obviously coordinating a lot of moving parts. The dynamics change sometimes by the hour. You know, we have a public out there that's pretty scared right now, and, but, once again, I think the opportunity, you know, for us to come together as a community to, you know, you know, be good neighbors and help each other and, you know, do things. We can all get through this crisis together by teamwork and, you know, including the public and...
Absolutely.
People just, you know, coming together like we have been. We are Virginia Beach. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah?
If I can bring up the other, other issues?
Yeah, I'll go right ahead.
So, one thing I wanted to bring to council's attention regarding public meetings and, and the way all this is working. So, right now, as, as the council knows, and the public needs to be aware of this, because we, we've heard these requests from a number of people, we do not legally have the ability to, to have tele-meetings where, where everyone is not present or has the ability to be present. The Mayor and I spoke to the Governor about it on Saturday when we saw him at Centerra. Our, our folks at Richmond, our lobbyists up there are talking to the General Assembly, are talking to the, the Governor's people about it. Ms. Wilson, who's the former President of Virginia Municipal League, has VML and VACO working on this as well, and I've spoken to all the senior delegation members in Virginia Beach in the last three days about this. What we're trying to do is to get the Governor to come up with some sort of executive order such that we, we can conduct meetings virtually some way that, that will limit the exposure, you know, not only to the public, but to the members of the body as well, so that we can continue to conduct, conduct the business. You know, we have, have an issue here that Mr. Rouse wants to bring forward that we need to evaluate, and it directly is, is important to this, and, and we don't have the ability to address it without having a meeting. So, I'm just telling you, there, there's a lot of moving parts working on it. You know, it may be a default where, where the state says, okay, you can limit the number of people who are physically present from the public, but they may still require us to all be in one location, but, but we're working through this, and I just, you know, as, as this changes and as people ask you, you know, why can't we hear my thing? And we, we got this from somebody who was upset about a deferral of an item because they want their, their short-term rental thing heard. You know, we're trying to explain to them, you know, we do not have the legal ability to, to do this. One of the, one of the senators I spoke to today said that he had brought this forward twice, and the general, in the General Assembly session, it was shot down towards the end of the session because they said, no, there's no need for that, and then obviously, obviously this occurred, and as, as we have the guidelines from the Governor, starting at a hundred, and then CDC was at fifty, and then the President said ten, so, I mean, see, the, these numbers tend, tend to go down, and as we count the number of people in this room, you know, we're certainly in violation of one of them. So, and, and as, as things come forward with, with controversial items or, or items that people are concerned about, we, we could have quite a few more. I do understand the city of Charlottesville did a beta testing on, on this yesterday. I don't know if Mr. Leahy can, can talk about that a little bit. I guess you talked to folks in Charlottesville about it?
Well, I, I didn't speak to them, but people from IT did, and at their regular meeting, they had, I think, five people attend, but on this, online, which I guess was, it was using a application called Zoom, which is similar to what we have, is, we use Citrix, Webex, and they had thirty-five people online, and they did have a couple of minor technical difficulties, some user issues, but they did make it work.
Okay. So, you know, it, based on that, and that, that's again, that Charlottesville doing a beta test where they still allow people to come in, because clearly, people have, have the right to do that, so I, I just think that, you know, we'll be hearing more about this, hopefully, in the, in the next couple of days, so that we can get back to, to doing the public's business as, as efficiently and safely as possible, but I just wanted to bring that up, Mr. Mayor.
Any, any comments? Yeah, I think it's important that, you know, we're, we're in somewhat uncharted territory, you know, right now as a body. You know, we want to conduct the people's business, but, you know, given the restrictions, you know, the situation that was imposed on us, you know, by the, you know, State of Emergency, national, state, and even our local one, where we have to take in priority, one is public, public health, and that includes the public health of, you know, the council members too, because, once again, we are meeting in this room today versus inside our normal conference room, you know, so we get the proper separation and safety precautions, you know, going forward. So, but, once again, all these things, but it is interrupting the people's business. We had a very ambitious agenda tonight that, you know, would have, you know, was probably a lot of people would have showed up for, but, once again, we have to put our safety precautions ahead of sometimes of the way we could, conduct business for now. And I think one of the, you know, complications is that, you know, we don't know where this disease process is going to yet. We don't know how long it's going to be. You know, we heard, you know, a couple, you know, at the meeting that Jim and I was at, you know, maybe, you know, there might be a two-week thing, but it looks like it may go beyond that. But, once again, I think what the Vice Mayor is saying, and I applaud him for his efforts to look at technology, so, you know, that we could maybe be together as a body, but, you know, to have people come for us, you know, you know, whether it be Skype or whatever technology is out there. But be assured, we intend, we encourage people to come up with ideas, and, you know, to, you know, to, we, we have a tough situation. You know, we have a, a lot of people that are, you know, not only in school, but, you know, their businesses are affected and the economy's affected, but this is a, not only a local phenomenon, it's not only a Commonwealth phenomenon or national, this is a global phenomenon that we're dealing with right now. But, once again, I think we're, we're all going to come together. We have a lot of people working in concert to make sure that we're going to do the right thing for the right reasons, but, you know, Erin and Doctor, I just want to say thank you for your efforts and thank you for your continued efforts. Anybody?
I just want to, you know, we talked about, this is a, you know, public safety is our number-one issue in, in conducting, you know, being able to conduct the, the people's business in orderly fashion, and, and understanding what our small businesses, our economies is, is built on the backbone of our small businesses. This idea, this, this resolution, which I hope we all can co-sponsor, is the way to kind of bring calmness to the business community who aren't being able to bring in any types of revenue, but yet the bills are still piling up, the taxes, which... of revenue, but yet the bills are still piling up, the taxes, which are, the due dates are still there. And by way of this resolution, it's, it's only a way to defer that, to delay that so that people can, whenever this thing's in, we don't know, it could be six months, it could be a year, we don't know. But find a way that so when people can get back on their feet, then they can get back to handling their business. But this, this resolution is just a way to kind of bring a sense of calm to our community and let them know that our council understands that businesses aren't operating like they used to to start markets right now, even though the president is talking about giving everybody a thousand dollars check. So this is the way of doing our part at the local level. And obviously, like Jim said, finding a way that we can conduct businesses, talking to the state as well is, is one that I know all of our, our delegation, state delegation and local delegation are working around the clock to find that solution. So hopefully, when we find the time, we can bring forth this resolution to bring a sense of calmness ease into our, our business community as well.
Yeah. And I appreciate that. And also going forward, there was a number of initiatives going on at the federal level, you know, to try to help out the businesses, you know, maybe with some, you know, some loans. But once again, I think what we're looking at, and, you know, I defer back to the meeting the vice mayor and I went to with the governor, and is this is going to be a federal initiative, a state initiative and a local initiative. And then even hopefully, in some ways, the commissioner of revenue and the city treasurer can initiate some, you know, at their discretion, you know, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, they, they can initiate autonomously a lot of their thing because we really don't have that much jurisdiction over them. Is that correct, Mr. Engham?
That's right. There are some actions that they can take without council's input and I think they are pursuing those.
Right. But, but once again, this is going to be a total team approach. A lot of moving parts are not known yet, you know, because they're talking about stimulus, you know, packages coming out of Washington. And, you know, certainly there's a lot of moving parts going on with the Commonwealth, with the governor. You know, the vice mayor and I are going to try to get a conference call with the governor soon to see if we can, you know, employ some of the methods that we might need to conduct the business in a rapid fashion. Because, you know, the longer we delay, it's going to put a burden on the city clerk because things are just going to back up. We got advertising requirements and we got, we have to address the backlog coming forward. But, but once again, I thank everybody for their patience. But, you know, once again, you know, coming together as a community, you know, whether it be the elected leaders and just everybody in the community is essential at this point. Okay? All right. Now, in this point, we are going to be moving, you know, forward, you know, with the, you know, the city manager search, you know, once again, trying to conduct, you know, a people's business. So I'm going to read this announcement. "In accordance with Virginia Code, Section 2.2, 3712B, the city council will hold closed meetings at an undisclosed location within the next 15 days for the purposes of interviewing candidates for the position of city manager. No votes will be taken other than the votes to convene the closed meetings. Any vote to appoint a candidate to the position of city manager will occur at a subsequent public meeting. And public notice of the time and location of that meeting will be provided in advance in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act." Okay? And once again, we're going to do our best to move forward, but, you know, once again, we're going to have to take a lot of factors into consideration. But once again, at this, any, okay, at this point, we're going to adjourn. Thank you very much, appreciate everybody's participation.